Alright, so I'm here with a soul sister. I'm here with a lovely client. Who has offered so graciously to talk a lot about her experience with her QHHT session. So her quantum healing hypnosis technique session. And it was an absolute pleasure to do the session, so I am very eager to hear about how life has been after the fact. And what amazing delicious juicy expansion has happened since then. Uh, it's been, I think, two or three months since the session?
Yeah, a couple of months.
Couple of months, okay. So, I wanted to kind of invite everyone to hear this conversation because um, I feel it can be helpful. I know the session was helpful for me even as a facilitator, so. Let me introduce my client Crystal. Say hello.
Hello. As Shannon said, I'm Crystal and um, I came to Shannon particularly for help with opening my voice and channeling. I felt this connection to her and on several levels. And I wanted to have this experience. Um, and I can say that it has been profound for me.
Love it. Love it, love it, love it. And just for some, um, I'll say putting, helping people put pieces together. There is a recording, so Crystal's recording of her session is on my YouTube channel. Um, I will put a link to that, but this is um, this is the person behind the Isis and ancient Alexandria recording, so. If you haven't heard it, you need to hear it because it's amazing, but um, another reason why we wanted to kind of come together and, you know, just put some background behind who this happened to. And also what this profound experience has changed in her life, as Crystal just said, so. We've got some questions, but we're just gonna have a fluid conversation because that's how we roll. And you kind of already answered the first question of why did you choose to have a QHHT session? You've, you said you were looking to just expand your voice. Was there any, any other reason, or was that the primary reason?
My primary reason was looking to under, you know, to open my voice, to unblock it. And of course, I have other issues, financial, health, relationships that I was hoping to get some insight on, my spiritual journey, the change in my career path. But I knew that the use of my voice and my inability to allow myself to be heard was something that I needed to work on. And so that's why, that's why it was my primary focus.
Okay, that makes sense. And so QHHT, it's, it's a past life regression technique. Have you done any past life regression sessions before?
I had and I will say right up front that QHHT is different for me. The other past life regressions um, I experienced were either part of a Reiki session or being led as a group or a recording and, and sometimes, you know, you would just, I would just have like a, an insight into something, you know, that was past life, but like, it was simply like, here's what you're seeing and you see this vision and then you're able to interpret that for yourself. Do you, you understand? Whereas with QHHT, I felt almost immediately from when you started speaking, I could feel a change in my energy and a dropping down, which I did not think was going to happen for me because I, I just, I wasn't sure I was gonna necessarily be a, a good candidate. And what's different about it is the facilitation of it and the question. So first, the fact that you ask a lot of questions at the beginning and you work with a person to rehome their questions to be asked of your higher self and to get in that past life is important. But then also during the session, this feeling of being led, because on my own, I would probably, you know, I'm like, okay, this, this happened or that happened, I would get the, a big picture idea. But there would be salient points that I think that you could point me to in a session that made, made a difference, so that could put it all together. So, you know, looking at my feet, what kind of coin was it? Where did I go? Um, what were the beings doing on your right or your left? And that actually helped create and open a real vision in a way that I had not had for other past life regressions.
Hmm, yeah, and I'm getting tingles because I, I mean, I very vividly remember the session. Because you were, uh, you know, the, the, this, this, I, I pictured this beautiful girl who had this flowing hair and, you know, these bracelets and these jewels and she was in the market and, you know, talking to the people and physically holding these gold coins, like I felt like I was there with you. So I, I love that you felt the difference as well because yeah, it's, it's literally just like going back in time. I love that. So how how do you think this, actually, no, I don't want to ask that. So at some point in the session, we find out that you are in ancient Alexandria. Had you, had you had any familiarity with kind of that, that timeframe or that, that um, kind of that culture prior to this?
No, and that's, um, no, I hadn't. I mean, obviously I knew Alexandria had existed and
Yeah.
you know, um, you know, Cleopatra and all of that, but I didn't, I was surprised that I was there. I'm just saying it like that. Um, and I did not know a lot about it. And I was very, I was a little like, am I making this up? Where there was that part of, am I making this up? But then I, after the session, I went on my little research hunt and I was like, oh, there were temples of Isis. There was a temple of Isis in Alexandria. Oh, you know, even some of the things I didn't say out loud to you because I was like, I don't know, this seems just I realized, oh, okay, I was sensing order behind there, you know? I could tell that, I could see that, that what I was experiencing was real and that I had that validation, that there were temples of Isis and there were representatives and there were people worshiping and so no, I, I, I was not, I was, you know, I was not essentially being influenced by other experiences and knowledge of Alexandria because I had done before, not, not in this way. Um, so.
But you, so you actually, you did research and you, you found
Well, that's why
proof of
Yes, because I wanted to know. I'm like, okay, you know, this seems weird to me, or I could see these, you know, particular people and I realized that, oh, okay, it's accurate that they're, that this was, you know, Isis. Um, the part where I was in the temple and uh, the connection to Sirius and Isis, that was real, um, which I, you know, I had not known. I knew about Nefertiti, but I did not know about, um, with Isis. I did not fully appreciate the story between Isis and Ra, which I learned about and can't recall it this, you know, in detail at this second, but I looked at that and I said, okay, that's another, um, another connection. Uh, there was a point where I thought to myself, I, I, there, I mentioned there being glass in this temple and I, I thought this can't be real because I, I mean, they had glass back then? Like, I did not think that that was true. And from the little bit that I can call together in my research, yes, there, there was some glass, you know, it's, it's, there was some glass. So it, it all put together, made me realize that I'd had a real experience. And that I was definitely seeing this temple and that what Isis was telling me is accurate, um, you know, that I am of that lineage and that those, that she runs through my veins and I felt, um, really then confident in the, the session and what had come through.
Okay, that's amazing. Yeah, I've, I've, I've had clients before who've had some kind of specific historical places in their, in their sessions. But I've never had anyone come back to me and say, I did the research and, you know, this was real, or, you know, this is what I found and this feels, you know, this feels exactly like what I experienced. So that's amazing that you were able to, to find that. Um, have you, I guess I'm just curious, so when you, when you were doing the research and, you know, did you find pictures? And then if you did find pictures, did you feel any connection? Did you, you know, feel a shift in energy? Did you feel, did you feel anything when you were kind of looking, looking through, um, the research that you found?
Um, I didn't really find too many pictures. I mean, there were pictures in general of Isis temples and there was, um, apparently the Isis temple in Alexandria is underwater now. Um, but we never got to that part, we never got to that part of my session because um, what, what happened to it. Um, I, I, so I didn't have that particular experience. It was more of, um, realizing, oh, these temples are real. Oh, people did worship in this way. Oh, okay, um, there is this connection to the stars, you know, just realizing that. And that alone shifted my consciousness. Um, there were a couple of other things that I talked about in the session of like when we had worshipped and I couldn't find the, the validation of that. Um, I'm trying to remember specifically now, um, what that was, but I was looking it up about the time of the, of the moon, um, of when we did that. And I couldn't find that specifically, but I have a feeling it's because I don't know how to search it. Do you know what I mean? As opposed to, it's not, uh, necessarily accurate, so.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but, I mean, at the end of the day, what you did, what you experienced was, was, it happened. And you got the validation in, in that at the, at the very least.
Yes, yes.
And I, again, I think that's amazing because a lot of people, you know, when we're, when we're doing this kind of hypnosis work, when we're working with that side of the brain, um, many people are skeptical because it's like, oh, I'm just making this up. This is too crazy. This can't be real. So to be able to have something concrete to, you know, point to and be like, yeah, this, I've, I've seen this in a book or, you know, on the internet, you know, on our credible research site and that, you know, this was it, this was, you know, this is what I experienced. So, so, so cool.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Yeah.
True.
How, how did you, how did you resonate with the essence of Isis? How did you res- resonate with kind of the, the girl in the temple and how, you know, how she went through her, her days as you experienced them in, in the session? Were there any, you know, qualities or characteristics about her that you resonate with or, you know, any, anything that, that sticks out?
I think that the resonance is let me skip that. It's not, it's not about a resonance as though, um, what is the word? That I feel, that I felt like in that moment that I was already her. It was more of a feeling that a revealing of this is who I am. Do you understand?
Yep.
As opposed to my current energy. So uh, uh, there was a point and, and she is saying, you know, I am the representative, representation of the winged one incarnate. We are your kin, we are your fire, we are your legion. We are devoted to you in this worship. This explanation that's telling me that the stars are running through my vein and that I am here to show people the light. I then realized or felt that I have the strength of Isis running through my veins, that I have her magic running through my veins and that I'm here to express that. And that's what resonated with me. Um, and I think that prior to this session, I saw energy or, or magic or light just as being something that I would access as opposed to just being inside of me. Like, in a lot of ways, you know, like there's light inside of you, there's strength inside of you. But now I feel like there is magic inside of me. And it's not just through symbols or what have you. It is literally coming through me. And that's what I'm feeling.
Mm-hmm. That, that right there. That right there. I'm gonna write, write this down real quick. Now, now I feel like there is magic inside of me. That distinction is, is, I mean, it's life-changing. That right there is life-changing because we, as you said, we, we, we hear these things, we read these things, we, you know, see the memes on social media. And it doesn't mean anything because it's, you know, it's just like, it's empty words, so to speak. But to have that feeling and that awareness that this is who I am and like, there is, there's no question, like, there's, there's no other way to be, like, this, this is who I am. This is what I am. This is who I be.
Yeah. That was the difference for me.
Yeah. So how, how has that awareness changed how you operate in the world? So kind of like a before and after, how, how has that shifted life for you?
What I noticed is that I trust myself more, I'll say that. And there's more symbols, uh, because I'm also a Reiki practitioner and that I've been kind of returning to the practice. And more symbols are coming through that are not even of the Reiki lineage, but that I feel, like even in that session, that Isis was giving me, you know, language. I also realized that the healing is in the body too, like the, for example, through the session and I, I'm not recalling now if it's just Isis or like my higher self, but they were telling me that that was the lineage that I needed to rely on and, and in going forward. And it was about omiing three times and about my breath. And I was like breath work, so I'm expecting, you know, like four counts, but it was simply a this releasing of this energy. And what I was realizing as I did it the first time was that our breath, our words, and even like almost sort of like this antenna and like kind of just leads you to exactly where you need to be, that hum. And then that healing energy is coming through the words. A lot of people do that already through their channeling, but I, I could feel that I could heal with my, with the energy coming through me in a way that was, is different than in Reiki. So that is the way I, I don't know if that makes sense, but that's how I'm experiencing it.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, knowing there's a, it's a, it's a different frequency of energy, the, the Reiki energy and then what you're speaking about. And the way that you, you bring through, well, the way that you connect and bring through is also, I would guess, I don't want to project that, but I would guess is different. Between, between the two. So has has this shifted any of your I guess I'll say beliefs, spiritual beliefs? Because I, I know, I know we were just talking about kind of the met, like us, the, the, the being of magic. Have you had any kind of fundamental belief shifts as a result of this?
It's not that I haven't thought of this question. I have, but in this moment, I'm thinking a little bit, um, a little bit more deeply, um, I would say like a deepening. Um, I was already very open, you know, but, um, a, a deepening and an acceptance, I would say, of who of being a star being that has come to the earth and being of that lineage and being open to those possibilities and not being afraid to follow that. I can still be a follower of, of many of the beliefs that I've had, like Christ, I, I, I'm I love and I follow Christ, probably not in the way of maybe a traditional Christian, but like I follow that. And I also follow these Isis and intuitively I become, began calling her mother Isis and I realized that it, it all works together. And I thought that before, but I more deeply feel that now.
Okay, so more as you said, a, a deepening or a deeper understanding and a deeper awareness of kind of how parts fit together. And how, and how they can be seemingly separate, but still very meaningful, still coexist and still each have their, their role in your, you know, umbrella spirituality.
That's right.
Yeah.
And being connected, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, and, and feeling feeling comfortable in that, like doing that in a way that's comfortable for you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's really good. Okay. Healing. There's always a healing portion of the QHHT session. What type of healing have you experienced?
Well, I've been doing a lot of, you know, physical healing work, but I think for me, I mean, honestly, that I think the biggest healing has been the opening of the voice for me. Um, not real, I, I mean, I, I knew how hard it, it would be for me to speak and to be open, but the mere fact that I'm able to have this conversation with you, I'm afraid for others to hear it is a, a literal step in the right direction, I feel. And my voice is opening. I feel my throat is opening. I would also say that it is a, um, it was a confirmation of who I meant to be. And I've been told this message, you know, you're a healer, you're a teacher, you're a facilitator. I've, I've been told it before and I've been struggling and walking into that and wanting more, 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 more. But since the QHHT session, it has been I think less of a, I need to strive towards that and more of an allowing. And this confirmation, I went to a, um, a meditation, like a, like a, um, it's called like a, there's Sekhms, 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 Sekhms Reiki. And there's an all-love meditation and I went to a day session and people are, you know, experiencing the energy. And as I'm watching people experiencing the energy, I'm not trying to be separate, but I feel that my first desire is to open my arms and to heal them and, and to feel Isis coming to me at, at a point and letting me know everyone has their own initiation. So I had this sense of a confirmation and so in essence it healed my spirit and concretized the road that I'm on. I would say.
Yeah. And that can be tricky because, I mean, everyone's experience is different, but because everyone's experience is different, you, you don't know what to do with the information. So that's reaffirming. I love that. How, how has, um, actually, let me refer, I didn't really state a question yet, but what practices did you learn from, from the session? And, um, how are you incorporating those into your, into your life, daily practices, relationships, any, any of that?
Well, there were several things that came through, um, picking a couple of herbs and ingesting them. One is blue lotus, which is connected to Egypt. And so I had taken lotus before, but it was more of a, you need to take more blue lotus. This is how you're going to be opening. I'm drinking it now with some bogansana. And it calms my nervous system, but also opens me up. And that's exactly what I needed. I didn't appreciate honestly until the last few months, despite the fact that, you know, my, my shaman had been telling me, you know, about the nervous system, how much your nervous system needs to calm down in order to, uh, open more to spirit, to be able to receive and to run the energy. And I, the blue lotus is helping that with that. I also was instructed to take Damiana. And at the time, I couldn't, I was, couldn't remember like what is Damiana, you know, about, but I've had some anxiety, um, some, just, just like mental issues running through my body and the Damiana is to help with that, that suppression, that anxiety. And so I would not have thought to go and take the Damiana for that purpose and that is being, is very helpful. And as I mentioned, oh, there was before I get to that, um, an instruction on moving light through my body and doing that in the morning and actually, it's just like a clearing energetic, like just like sort of movement and working with light. And that has been helpful because it's, and I haven't done it too many times, but when I have done it, I can feel that I know intuitively how to run the energy through my body and to kind of like clear myself and open myself up to more. So that has been very helpful. And as I mentioned, um, omiing, um, I'm a yogi, so I've owned a lot, but I, I was like, okay, you want me to own for like three days? Okay. Um, and the om evolved into a hum. And then and I can just feel that hum is like an antenna connecting to the universe, like hmm. And I do it and I do it. And then I'll often pray that after, like what, after I hum, because I'm clearing my throat, that whatever comes through me is through light. But sometimes I don't have to do even that. It just sort of like moves me into that space. And I breathe over my mouth and whatever it needs to come out, comes out. And so that has been a practice that I've that's come through.
That's beautiful. So you're able, able to connect with yourself, show up with yourself, for yourself and others in new and different and I don't want to say more impactful, but new in different ways.
Yes.
Yeah, that's beautiful. When did you notice that things were shifting for you? Like af- after your session, was there, was there anything immediate or was it kind of just like gradual things you kind of noticed through your day-to-day?
It was immediate and that's what was surprising. Um, yeah, it was just like, oh, let me do these couple of practices. Oh, words are coming out. It was just
Oh crap, what's this?
And it is a bit of a pushing of energy. That's what, it, it was, um, oh, for like sometimes like, oh, I sense some things here, you know, like I think I'm, I'm hearing something and you know, I would be, you know, what I'm hearing. But there, it was like, it had to come out and that, that's what made the difference. It was like, you need to get this out of your throat. And sometimes it was just, I just need to say whatever that is. And then it was, I need to say something to someone else about whatever this is. And so I could feel this pushing and that became more clear to me. And so I could, that's like, okay, this is real. This needs to come out. I'm just gonna let it out, whatever it is and let that energy flow through me.
Got it. It, so, and you also said earlier about being able to trust yourself. So coupled with the ability to just kind of trust yourself now more and the intuition of, you know, this sound needs to come out of my mouth or this word set of words needs to come out of my mouth. So that kind of coupled together has been more, bigger?
Yes.
More.
Yes, more. Yeah.
Okay. And how does that feel for you?
It feels both elevating and grounding, I would say. And I, I say it in a sense of, I feel that I'm moving up a level in my journey. But the, the trusting and that confidence or the insight that I was given also grounds me because it makes me feel that my steps are walking in the right direction. So I'm feeling both things.
Yep, that makes perfect sense. Did you have any doubts walking into this experience?
I did. I mean, and I'm, I've done a lot of, uh, spiritual work, uh, but you know, like I said, I wasn't sure, can I be hypnotized? You know, like, and you don't want to be, um, you don't want to succumb to a power of suggestion. And so, and so of course there's skepticism and like, you know, is this just a suggestion and therefore I'm doing it? Um, and so for me, and I, I have that, you know, just often, but, um, and for me, those doubts were erased. I mean, first of all, as I got into it more deeply, I could, and my higher self is speaking, I was like, okay, that seems real. And there were doubts like, oh, I don't know if there was glass in Alexandria or why on earth am I seeing the peacock? You know, like everything's like that. Uh, or like, why couldn't I see what was on top of the coin? Um, but afterwards, there is like no doubt because like I said, I did some verification, but also it just feels right. And so yeah.
Yeah.
Feels right.
What have, what have you enjoyed most about this, this process, this becoming process?
It's really like, I'm just like so excited that like, what was revealed to me and the instructions work like? That's, I, I was like, oh my gosh, like this really works. Um, and it is just so exciting and what I also like is that it seems to be I think deepening on its own. Do, do you understand? Like, um, the integration? Yes, I had immediate, uh, an immediate, uh, uh, result in the sense of I, I could recognize the immediate things that were happening. But I, it is definitely deepening. You know, like I said, this week, you know, having this, this, this death and, and, um, I was serving like the, it was there to support my god sister and her mom in this process, but and so I was doing more of that than like shedding myself. And then as I began to shed and to be able to allow this hum to take me there, to allow words to come through and then to allow a shaking through my body. That shows me that I'm able to, I now know how to receive that energy and let it flow through. And I don't know that I could have done that the day after the session. I know that it's just moving along on its own and helping me to evolve.
So there's an element of, I mean, obviously trust, but surrender to, to to what has happened, but to the, to the process of becoming self, more of self. Um, and getting comfortable with that. But the threat of allowance, I think, is the, is the biggest one. Cause you, you said that a few times. Just al- allowing and not not trying to acquire more or to, you know, force something, but just let it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Has, have you had people kind of in your circle notice any differences in, in, you know, how you carry yourself or how you interact?
Um, I don't know that they would notice because I don't see them as often, um, because I work from home and I don't see them very often. I would think that my husband might, and so you can edit this out in a moment. Hold on. Darren, have you noticed any changes in me since, uh, since my Q H H T session? Oh, he has something in his mouth. He's getting it out. My dear husband who but he can, I didn't actually ask him if he had seen it. Okay.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, A A, I had noticed definitely a more uh, of a groundedness, more confidence in the various things that, that she was doing and the, the various practices that she had been sort of, you know, working on or dedicating yourself to, um, just more or just this calm confidence and groundedness, I guess would be the best way to describe it. So, and, and also with, with, um, with the things that have been happening this past week. A A's the sense of knowing what to do with it in, in terms of reaching out or trying to be there for the people that she cares about and that were, you know, experiencing a deep loss. Just this almost like more automatic sense of what, what to do for them.
You notice any difference in my channeling? Have I channeled a lot with you around? Okay, yeah, only a few times.
No, no data on that.
All right. Thank you sweetheart.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. No, it's awesome. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, we, we feel lots of differences in ourselves, but you don't know the ripple effect until you ask someone else if they've noticed a change in you. So that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. And he's, it's a good subject because he spends all, um, we spend a lot of time together.
Very nice. What are you? What are you most looking forward to now?
Most looking forward to seeing where this takes me. Um, I have a, uh, it's been coming over the last few days, but this sense of, okay, now it's time for me to step into my own path, like more fully, like just like do it. And I'm feeling that coming. Um, and so I'm looking forward to seeing how I can weave in these lessons, um, and how that'll help me move forward. One of the lives that I had was a life where you know, I was waiting for someone else to give me permission, waiting for someone else to show me my worth. And I don't feel like I need to do that anymore. And so I'm looking forward to just stepping out and shining my own light. Yeah.
Yeah, the lady sitting at the table, smoking her cigarette, waiting for her husband. No more waiting.
No more waiting.
No more hashtag, no more waiting. What? What, if anything else, would you, would you like to share? About your experience or about life or about what you've learned?
I mean, I, I think I wanna say thank you really for you, for leading me through that experience. Um, obviously I've never had another Q H H T session. I don't know what others do, but I know that my experience with you was just really lovely and profound. And I think that is in part because of the facilitation that you know, where you led me through this journey and asked the right questions and your curiosity of, well, what happens next? What are you looking at or what are you doing? It, it would not have, I think, opened up those past lives in that way and your follow-up questions on my, um, like even though we had worked on questions before the session, there were times I think you were like, well, what about this? And those questions also helped. So I feel that I just wanna thank you for leading me through that process.
My pleasure, my absolute pleasure. Cause like, I mean, I, I get something from every session, but I, this session really, really stuck with me. So it's my pleasure to, to help you experience that.
Thank you.
And, and it's also really cool. Cause I remember the first time we met and I noticed a big shift in you. So that's also very, very cool to see as well. Yeah, I remember the first time we met. I was like, holy crap, this woman's amazing. Yeah, I'll tell you about that after. But yeah, this is, this is good. Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's all the questions. I think
Okay.
I feel, I feel complete. Do you feel complete?
I feel complete. I do. Yes. It's wonderful.
Well, I'm, I will stop the recording and actually I'll say for anyone who is interested, interested in information about Q H H T, I will put that below. And just thank you, thank you, thank you again to Crystal for being such an amazing client and for offering to have this conversation because she proactively started the conversation. So that is a testament to her process as well.